My pleasure, Mr. President. United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being of this world.
First, I call...
Shang Lee?
Here.
Cunningham?
Here.
Doyle?
Here.
Perdoso?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Wilson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Star?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
We have more.
Thank you. First, I want to send this here to our Communications Committee. I'll take Mrs. Graff. Can I take a quick?
Good evening, everybody. You hear me okay? My name is Jennifer Graff. I'm the Instructional Technology Coach for the School District, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to share some of the updates that our district and our committee has been working on over the last couple of months. I'm pretty excited we have some pretty neat things that we want to share with you. So, all of the work that our committee has done has been based on feedback that we've received from parents and guardians, the community, and staff, based on surveys we've conducted. And based on the feedback we've received, we focused on two goals for the last couple of months. The first one is to update and streamline communication methods at the district and school level based upon survey results and communication methods that we've researched. Based on those updates, we're working on Goal Number Two: Integrate a proactive media communications program that highlights the district's goals, challenges, and accomplishments. So, looking at our feedback that we've received from surveys, primarily, the parents have requested that we use -- they prefer to use our four methods of communication. One was email, number two was text messages, three was school messenger alerts, and the fourth one was ClassDojo. So, looking at those top four communication preferences, four of them are mobile -- or I'm sorry, three of the four are mobile friendly. So, using that information, and using information that also found that parents preferred ClassDojo, which is a communication platform that was primarily used at Janvier, with most of the teachers using it, they've requested that we streamline that communication over all three schools. Our goal was to have that rolled out in the fall with 100% of teachers using it, and using this year to train the staff and get all the families accustomed to it. But based on a recent staff survey, we already have 89% of classroom teachers using ClassDojo district-wide. Within those classrooms, 96.7% of the parents and guardians have joined those classrooms. So, not only are they receiving communication from the classroom level, but they're also receiving communication from the school level as well. Within ClassDojo, if you're not familiar with it, there's also a school story. So, not only can the teachers communicate with the parents, but the school can communicate as well. And one of the nicest aspects of ClassDojo is it also translates. So, this way, parents who don't speak English at home are receiving the communication in their home language, which has been a great benefit. And we're currently working with ClassDojo to assess the feasibility of syncing real-time to import student data for the 24-25 school year. So, they are rolling out a district account. So, with that district account, we're working with them now to see if we can sync our real-time data, so this way, all the contact information will import into ClassDojo, and it will automatically roster for the teachers, making it much easier for them to use it within the classroom. Additionally, we're now rolling out a new school website and a new platform for all our communications. So, given that parents overwhelmingly wanted our communication to be app-friendly, we've gone with a more mobile-friendly platform. And this is an all-in-one communication platform that'll integrate our website, a mobile app, alerts, social media, and push notifications. So, we'll no longer be using school messenger. We'll be moving this all to a new platform called AppToG. It's simple, it's very easy to navigate. All content has been refreshed based on Google Analytics over the past year. So, Mr. Walton and I went through the last year of Google Analytics. We looked at what pages were getting hits, what pages were not getting hits. We removed that hit the page that's not getting hits. We removed that content off the websites. We really took great strides in making sure we were removing old content. All of the platforms are responsive across all device types, meaning that our website is now more mobile-friendly. So, our current website, when you try to pull it up on your phone, it doesn't necessarily always fit properly, so now it's more responsive and more mobile-friendly. It's ADA compliant and accessible to everyone. Communication is translated to the students' home languages, which is pretty neat. So, we have quite a few English-language learners in our district, so now alerts, all that information will be pulled from real-time, so the students' home language will now be integrated into alerts, and it will automatically translate that communication to whatever they speak at home. And it's much more time-saving, not only for parents and guardians, but for staff as well. You do see a flyer that's in front of you. I created that, and that has QR code, so if you wanted to download a mobile app, you can see what it looks like, but I have a webcam, so I'll show it to you on the phone. But not only is it easier for parents, but it's also much easier for staff, because staff also have a mobile app, which they can use to update, and I'll show you how easy it is to do all that as well. So, looking at the website, we tried to keep it in a very similar format to what we currently have, just to make sure it's friendly for the parents. It's much easier for them to find the information without reinventing the wheel, because overwhelmingly, parents were happy with the communication we had. We just wanted to update what we're currently using. So, you can see, we still have all the same headers. A nice feature is, if we wanted to translate it, we can -- these are all the languages within our school district, so it will easily translate. We've updated our staff directory, and this, again, will also import into the app. So, when you click on a teacher, you can see that it'll show the website, and it'll show all the contact information on the app as well. You can just click a button, and it will automatically call the teacher. You can click another button, it'll email the teacher. You click another button, you can view their website. So, that's much more user-friendly as well. And this is all basically the same content we currently have. Again, it's updated, we've removed the old, stale content. When you get down here, this is a really neat part, and this gets into Goal Number Two, which is showcasing some of the positive things we're doing in our district. So, we have a news feed on here, which is for longer articles showcasing some of the positive things we're doing in our district. Again, you see the events section, which will show all the events happening. And we also have a live feed down the bottom. So, a live feed is more for just like in the moment, or in the minute moments that we want to share out to the families. And another nice feature is, there's a search feature here as well. So, if you're searching for, let's say you just want to find the school calendar, you can easily search for documents now on here. Documents are uploaded, they're much easier to find, and it's just a much more user-friendly interface for parents than what we currently have. All right, and then very quickly, I'll show you what our app looks like. So, there is a QR code if you'd like to check that out for yourself. So, when you log into the app for the first time, you'll have the option to -- there's a light right over it, is that okay? Okay, so, as soon as you log into the app, you can immediately allow notifications, so I'm going to allow them on my phone, because again, that was one thing we found. Parents were really looking for the push notifications. I can select which schools I wish to receive notifications from. I'm going to swipe all schools, so this way, you can receive district notifications. If you have children in two schools, you can pick two schools. I'm going to click Save. All right, and then you can see our app. You can easily switch by clicking on here. You can switch between the district feed and the school feed. Oh, I just got a ClassDojo alert. And that was not playing. So, I can switch between schools, I'll keep it on the district one. But you can -- the point of the app is to see more of the social aspect of it. It's not necessarily a reinvention of the website, it's more to see what's going on in the schools, different events, different notifications. There's a menu down here, and I really like this one, the staff directory. So, again, let's say we want to pick a teacher. So, right here, I have the option to view her website. I can call, and that will call and put her directly into her voicemail, and I can email right from there. So, again, it's a much more streamlined way to communicate with teachers. Going into the menu, I can search for -- I can view the feed. So, there's all the feed for the district, different things. So, again, it's just a much more mobile-friendly, it's more visually appealing, I think, so I think it'll get more parents to view the website. Additionally, we have this app for staff notes. This is so much easier to update than what we're currently using. I've been updating both our current website and the new website each time. This takes a matter of minutes. So, right now, I'm in the live feed, but if I want to add something, let's say I want to create a post, just with one post, I don't know if you can see that, I can immediately send something out to Facebook, Twitter, a live feed, a notification, a text message, a voice call, and an email, just in the app. And I can send it out to any list I want, and it's so much more streamlined and easier to use, that I think we'll get a lot more teachers and staff to buy in and post different things to social media. So, one of our goals, again, was to showcase all of the things out to social media, so this way, parents are seeing all the good things we're doing. And I've noticed that since we did switch over to this new platform, we're getting a lot more engagement on our posts, because previously, we were using a third-party app that would post from our website, and it was deliberate. So, we would post to our website, it would go through this third-party app, and then feed out to social media, but we weren't getting as many hits. Since we switched to this new platform, we're getting a lot more likes and engagement on our posts, and that flyer, we're going to be sharing out to parents as well, to get more, you know, get more people to follow us on Facebook and Twitter. So, our next steps for our committee are to continue providing professional learning on the ClassDojo platform with the goal of having 100% implementation in the fall. We want to continue our relationship with the Township's Communication Commission. We want to continue efforts for enhancing consistent communication within the classroom level about instructional content and school achievement, and we really think that'll be easier to implement with the use of the new apps. And we want to continue to foster improved lines of communication between the district and individual faculty and staff members. Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Yes?
First off, I think it's great, everything that you've presented. When does the new website take over for the old one?
We're actually ready to go, so as soon as we decide. We're going to wait to roll out the alerts part of it until the fall, because right now, parents are used to what we currently have.
Right.
So, we don't want to touch alerts this school year, but we're pretty much ready to go with it.
Okay, I was just wondering, because I was trying to pick it up, and if the old one just comes along.
Right, right. We haven't officially switched it yet. We wanted to present it to you guys.
We wanted to show you guys first.
That's fine. That's fine.
You get the TP key before we're mine.
The TP of data with real-time, is that free? Do they offer that free, or is there a...
There's a small charge just to create the FTP file that they have to create to send over, but then it syncs nightly. So, once you pay that initial fee to customize that feed, then there's no process.
I'm assuming there's no need to worry some, or worry about confidentiality or anything like that, in terms of that data's going into that app?
No, no. Real-time is worked with them before.
Okay. And then with the professional learning on ClassDojo, I'm a little confused with that, because I'm pretty familiar with ClassDojo. Who's providing that professional learning? Okay, but I guess my question is why? Why is -- I'm not really sure why that's...
Anytime we introduce a new platform to staff, they just want to be comfortable with it. So, I mean, it was very brief training, and everybody was on board, so it's like, but that's why, you know, even before we had the full rollout, we already had 89% of teachers district-wide using it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. You did a great job.
All right, thank you.
Very impressive. I'm sure...
Thank you.
Guys, I do want to give Jen just a shout-out down below. Our presentation was only 15 minutes, and looking at just hours and hours and hours. This was a heavy, heavy lift, certainly a lot of behind-the-scenes work, and a lot of help, I think.
Thank you.
And if she called me, so I'll have to meet you again, but...
You bet.
You know, when we were looking at the analytics, Board Breeze from 2013 weren't getting any heads. But it was almost like cleaning up the old closet, and when you do, you feel great about it, and the X or Y, you have to...
Great job.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item I want to present is our public comment section for ten items. Would that be a Republican or a Republican second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any Republican who would like to comment on ten items? Do you want to make a special proposal, second? All in favor? Do you have the need for executive sessions, easy to discuss personnel, to manage, and contract initiation, or annualization? How long do you just take? Is that good?
About forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes? All right, well, I guess...
The floor.
Jen?
The floor is empty.
In that case, I'll make a question. There's an exact, uh, couple of items, and I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's exactly what you want, sir. That's it, executive session is set at forty-five, and second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The school president report, have a couple things to report to you guys. One, I attended, or quite happened, attended master planning meetings for townships that are reexamining their master plan, going all over their planning, strictly, was the adoption of pilators this year. Last meeting, one of the topics was the campus facilities. It was a consensus of the committee, again, to say that this committee is only making recommendations to the planning board that will ultimately be recommended to the township committee, whether or not they adopt them, it's a bill of the February body, but our recommendation was, as far as the campus facilities go, to prohibit them in all areas of the township, with the exception of industrial centers. Now, so I think that will take care of any issues with Ritter, as well as Janvier, however, I think Ritter is an entity of a manufacturing facility on Route 40, which I believe they would be traditionally permitted in that sin. One of the conditions being that they're minimum of 1,000 feet away from a school building. That was a suggestion for the committee, and that is what we're going back to the planning board, that's what I want you guys to have, that's a route. If anyone has any questions about that, specifically, sir?
1,000 feet from the building, is any problem?
I believe it's building to building. We had a discussion regarding separately about warehousing, you know, some of the distances and whatnot, so I think the consensus was building to building.
Because the kids are on the playground, they're all the way over the park.
Yeah, I'm clear on that, because that, you know, doesn't make sense to, obviously, if you think that kids are going to be outside, it should be, you know, if you're worried about this.
Teachers on the cars.
Yeah. Now, the second item I had, also related to campus, a while back, was an application that we were sending forward to put a manufacturing cultivation facility in the old Janvier school, so standing and chairs and the current. I thought that the application that we're drawing, however, just as pin, at the best of my knowledge, it is on for the June sending board meeting, and frankly, it's only June the sixth. It's usually the first Tuesday, however, this one, or in June, it'll be the first Wednesday because of the primary election.
September.
Seven.
That's Ritter's...
Yeah, so, okay, so June...
Yeah, that's Ritter's graduation.
At seven, yeah. There's any way we could put that? I mean, I can't imagine that they would grant the purpose being to residential, say, neighborhood across the church and daycare.
Well, is it possible for us, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I'm assuming most of the planning goes, which kind is Ritter's graduation?
September.
Okay, so, if we did, that's right, so if we did have someone attend the planning to speak, or if it were us, yeah, since most of us are probably at Ritter, not go to the...
I actually did not realize that those things conflicted, but I have a first application for a veteran representing word that is...
So, you'll be there?
And that is...
I mean, are we in agreement that we would want him to speak for us, that we would not want that there?
Yeah, and that's makes sense, same as the president word, that, you know, you actually...
Yeah, and you could just explain that, the reason that you're representing us is because we're at Ritter's?
Right, yeah, we obviously have more attendance.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sure. So, that's all I have for the president to report. Is there anything apart from...
Not really. I was supposed to go to the meeting at the beginning of May, I forgot, I'm sorry. Nothing new.
All right, any PA time to report? All right, moving on, in a group of minutes, our April 44th, fourth session, as well as a regular working, if everyone does have a change for the events, or if there's any changes, changes, uh, here in the convention of events explicitly, that's second.
Second.
All in favor?
I would be very pleased to have that, please. I have just gained some minutes, so I'll go to stop here. Yes.
Moving on, team resources, reviewed in our second session, there's no questions or comments, I would like to acknowledge the retirement of Mrs. Price, as well as Kathy from Jersey Falls. She sits with us for 17 years, 28 total, there's a certain, and Kathy's account paid off 4000, congratulations, but... Any other questions, like in the resource? Here in the convention, first, team resource items, G1 through G13, and frankly, I have a second. Other comments, church control?
Wilson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Shang Lee?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ms. Mary?
All right, Ed Page, right, just...
It's all part of the way, and look at their games, just three, just one more time.
If anyone has any questions about that, I have a convention to approve education items, A135, recommended by the superintendent, that's second. Any other comments, church control?
Shang Lee?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ms. Mary?
General Administrator, we have the solar, and more, on the islands, the only chain is C and R three, if you are lost roles, this is our second, our lost roles for two years as required, and are intended for now.
Any questions? I have a convention to approve administration items, A11, provided, recommended by the superintendent, that's second.
Second.
Any other comments, church control?
Doyle?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Shang Lee?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ms. Mary?
Operation?
No changes on operations from the initial, based on the agenda, I don't want explains, Stu Billis, April, April, I don't two, three, and four, are coming up March 24. Turned over, March 24 also. Item six is none. Item seven, Delsey listed, Delsey tuition. Eight is none, nine is none. Item number 10, a little bit different than usual, this will be income that the district is achieving, this is student that we are transporting, E S Y now, will be the Delsey student next year, let's go with the E S Y program, given our bus drivers, we're doing such a good job with them, we're continuing that route for Delsey, and will be paying that money that's listed as a... Eleven is none, twelve is none. Item 13 is the food service management company, addendum, given it's year two, over by contract, see the price increase for $4000, here. Item 14 is the requisition for school taxes, based on the area approved, for the 2420 budget. Item 15 is our real-time student information system, all breakdown. Sixteen and seventeen, law and commonality, so the purchasing manual and the standard operating receivers manual, again, nothing changed from the 23, 24 manuals, except for this one here. And number 18 is the lease purchasing finance award, one responded, T, but the financing, we see five years, principal listed, again, that's the purchase hour, for new, 15, 14, 15 plus. What's your next?
Um, I have a question, church, is that part of transportation, I'm sorry. I'm not sure if I made this off my head, but wasn't there some sort of meetings that happened between...
Yes.
Yes, that's, you know, some work around, a meeting of...
So, initially, there were business administrators who had gotten together to be able to list your special end routes, where you're going, where you're starting from, just in order to maybe make a better go-out system. That happened maybe about a year ago, earlier this month, myself and Mrs. Sharon Claire, expedition, went over to Washington Township to sit with more, jobs 19 directors, superintendents, other VAs, and other transportation coordinators, to kind of do the same thing. There has been some changes to the superintendents in other districts, so they were unaware that this was slightly already happening within the VA circle. So, this basically brought it into the circle who was at the table. We did come up with setting up a spreadsheet, somebody, I believe, that heard, transportation coordinator was going with a situation ahead of it, so she featured her creating spreadsheets, so we could kind of build out about special end routes, who we're coming to have, coming to have on the route, some of the costs that we have, just in order to kind of see if we can pick other children up, do some shared answer services, go out, something like that, so, nothing has materialized, everything's been appeared, but again, if and when that does materialize, and...
Thank you, that's a good, you know, we're, because that's important, you guys are properly, you know, working on that, and this is definitely also better than, since we have, not on the education side, but transportation, thank you, man. Any other operator question? I have a convention to approve operations with the items J1 through J18, direct heading, that's second.
Second.
Any other comments? With that, all, sure.
Smith?
Yes.
Star?
I guess I'm staying with J1, Bill's number one, and I'm...
Delsey, yes. Shang Lee?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ms. Mary?
All business, ever, again, guys, 100%. Anyone else question? If you get into that, I don't know if you can, anyone have anything on the other one too? We have the feasibility study, the regionalization, as well, just wanting to get an update to the community, I know we talked about executive assessment, and also, you know, welcome, Mr. Cunningham, Shang Lee, China, at any point, as you guys are on the steering committee as well, if I interpret this statement, but at this time, it appears that the regionalization study between Delsey, Elfrin, and Newfield has an indefinite standstill between the four districts due to an outside situation between Delsey and Newfield relating to some of the tuition buildings. Until that's resolved, it doesn't appear that we can move forward with the consolidation study as is. That being said, we are exploring other options currently to see if it'll be feasible to continue with the study excluding Newfield at this time. I'm not sure if anybody from the steering committee would like to add anything to that
I think one of the biggest things that came out of the meeting decides back that this has to be, this conflict has to be resolved before we can go forward, is the frustration that many of us had with the fact that this was an issue that needed to be resolved before we could go forward, which was known by said parties, mainly Newfield, not speaking of Penn, was not really divulged with all the other meetings and times that we've been talking. So it was a little frustrating for many of us on the committee that getting to the very end of the study, all of a sudden, this conflict came back and halted the progress we were trying to make.
Yeah, and it all, you know, unfortunately, it stems mainly from an unholyness of some of the parties to even discuss resolution to the issue at hand. Again, I won't say too much, but we're, we're, it all is an appropriate area, but just want to make that clear to the public. Did you have any part?
Everything's the same.
All right. Thank you for your comment, and I'll follow. So that's where we're at with the regionalization. And again, we are supporting moving forward at this time, you know, excluding Newfield. However, probably want to update on that, so at least the June meeting, in the next, later if that will transpire. Anything new business? Yeah, sure. Again, regarding our June meeting, we have two meeting schedules, June. Sorry. The regular meeting schedule for June 17 will be canceled, and that will be solidated with our previously scheduled fourth session, which will occur on June 12. June 12, now we are already meeting, and the 17 will be canceled. Yeah, June 12 held here in the upper room, January 6. There it is. There it is. So with that, there's no other new business. I make a motion to the other public, we're down there, second. All favor. Anyone from the public who wants to trust the board, please. I make a motion to list the public, second.
Second.
All favor. Very remember upcoming meetings. So with that, I make a motion. Anybody have any, uh, sign a motion here?
Second.
All favor.